Eric, if you can hear me, I'm having trouble with my webcam, so.
Okay.
All right.
It's okay with you, Chuck. I'll just call, I'll call the order now. Welcome everyone to the July 23rd Board of Selectmen meeting held under the Governor's Order under a virtual meeting using the Zoom technology. It's okay with anyone else. I'd like David to read the agenda and then a motion second or any modifications to that agenda or motion second to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, there will be a period of public comment. Actually, first we will vote to approve or amend the agenda and then a period of public comment. And then the first item is a consent agenda with payroll warrant and setting the next meeting date of August 6, 2020. The second item is consideration of public safety items, consideration of fire department grants with Chief Ward, a consideration of police department appointments with Lieutenant David Bento, and a COVID-19 update with the COVID-19 team. The third item is 2020 Annual Town Meeting with reconsideration of ballot questions approved at the April 2nd, 2020 Select Board Meeting. Review of warrant articles for annual town meeting. Fourth item, consideration of appointments. Farm Pond Advisory Committee with Catherine Rockio for a term to expire June 15, 2023, and consideration of approving election workers. Fifth item is consideration of administration items and routine business as finance director, consideration of deficit spending, one-twelfth of budget for FY 2021, and town administrator and select board member reports. And then adjourn to executive session under the following exemptions not to return to open session. The exemptions are Item 1, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares, library. Item 2, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations of town council contract services. And Item 3, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or anticipated threatened litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And Subsection 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements specifically, MGL Chapter 214, Section 1B, right to privacy.
Thank you. As a note, now you've gone through effort to read that executive session part, do I really have to reread that when we come down to that? Can I just say what you said before?
Yeah, you can do that. Yep.
Alrighty, is there a motion?
So moved.
Done good.
Okay. All in favor, let's see, I'll do an order, I see Jeff.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul, you're on mute. Looks like an eye. And then where is Chuck on here at all?
He is, yeah. His camera showed up.
I'm here, I.
Yes, okay, hi. Okay, very good. Okay, so we have a request for public comment. That's Catherine Rockio. Go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Rockio Harrington Ridge, 1600 Ridge, and I'm the Chair of the Farm Pond Advisory Committee and wanted to really use this to give you guys the Select Board an update on a situation. On Saturday, the 18th, there was a butter that shared a picture on a butter email list taken that he took at his frontage of an unusual green substance floating on the north end of the pond, and he described it as green paint. This email kicked off a whole series of emails and activities definitely let play out like an episode of CSI. Picture was shared with Farm Pond Advisory Committee, CONCOM, Tom Trainer, who is a resident expert to us, the Board of Health, and then Mary Ann Moore and Nick Rodenhouse, who are also experts in certain fields that we've relied upon. Mary Ann Moore, as many people know, she's a sort of world-renowned lymnologist, and Nick Rodenhouse is a biologist of sorts. I'm not going to get that wrong, but anyway, what happened was immediately Mary Ann confirmed from the pictures it could be an algae bloom. She needed a microscope. Some, she did caution everybody that some blue-green algies were toxic, but some weren't. Tom Trainer, this all happened within like a day, tracked down a microscope. We brought in John Hyde at the Sherburne Yacht Club, and Yacht Club was engaged. Mary Ann got a sample from the butter. The butter delivered water to the town offices. She delivered it to Mary Ann, and on Monday evening, Mary Ann had tentatively identified it via microscope that it was a microcytosis. I can't say it properly. It's a cyanobacteria. So it is present in quite high abundance around. It can be, and it doesn't necessarily have to be toxic, but. So right away, Farm Pond Advisory was involved, and we had a meeting on Tuesday night, and in reaction to this, first of all, the algae bloom was not to be seen on Sunday. So it showed up on Saturday, was recorded, was photographed, and then was not seen. Sort of cleared up pretty quickly. But our meeting as of Tuesday, we had a meeting this week on Tuesday, we are going to be doing total phosphorus testing. We were reaching out to a butters to educate and update everybody. We're communicating with CONCOM. We've got a couple management plans in the works, a rapid response plan specifically for algae, algal blooms, algal blooms, and a surface water protection plan. I wanted just to tell you guys, did involve Board of Health right away. Any health-related issues obviously get involved right away. You have to go to the Board of Health, and Daryl was involved with this. We're continuing to coordinate with the Sherburne Yacht Club for data collection and monitoring the pond, and it's possible we'll use the town website to further update. And we want, of course, everything to be directed to the Board of Health if it's a health-related question. And just since this is public comment, just wanted to remind every resident that to help Farm Pond, we should always comply with the rules. Stop at the entrance, wash your boats. Familiar residents can familiarize themselves with the 2012 Mass Legislature Act relative to the regulation of plant nutrients, which has to do with fertilizing lawns, and watershed residents can find practical guidance from Mass DPH. You can reach out to Farm Pond Advisory Committee for more information on this to maintain septic, reduce application of fertilizer, pick up pet waste, don't feed ducks or geese, and plant native vegetation around the pond's edge. Not that any of this would necessarily prevent it. I mean, climate change is a big impact on algae. We've been worrying about this and sort of, we weren't expecting it, but it wasn't totally shocking. So, and as I said, we're writing a specific rapid response plan for this kind of picture-perfect of what was done this past weekend. And finally, we could not have done, I mean, Tom Trainer, I just have to call him out. He just was on 100% this and ran it to ground. I don't know if anybody has any questions. This is all written up. Can pass this, the update I gave to you along.
Thank you. Normally during public comment, it's usually not a question-answer period, but something like this, does anyone at least on the Select Board have a question?
Well, I don't have a question, but this, I just want to point out a couple things. This was discussed at the Board, Catherine's done a terrific job, as has Tom and the whole team. This was discussed at the Board of Health last night, which I attended, and Daryl can maybe comment later. She's en route back from Western Mass right now, so she's going to try and dial in at some point, but she hasn't been able to do that yet. But as Catherine mentioned, they've been actively involved.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you can download under, for you on the Select Board reports. Thank you very much, Catherine. That was a concern, and I think it's, it's good to know we're on top of that.
Thanks.
All right, if nothing else, I'm going to go on to agenda item number one, the consent agenda. Any comment from the Select Board on the consent agenda?
Chair, Mr. Chair. I think the Advisory Committee needs to convene their meeting.
Okay, they convene it now or they convene it right around agenda item number three? Makes no difference to me. Is Steve, is Steve online there?
Yes. He chatted. He said he could do it when you're ready.
You, if you want me to convene now, I can. I think we have a quorum right now, so I suppose I might as well just do so. So I'd like to call to order the Sherburne Advisory Committee meeting. We're essentially just here to discuss the warrant with Select Board. I believe we have myself, Stephen Tsai, Jane Matarazzo, Wasim Basli, Brendan Daly, Peter Galatano, Druv Kachal, and Natalie Weir present, and I'm calling to order at 7:11 PM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any comment on the consent agenda or any motions relative?
I moved, approved.
Okay, so I'm going to call it move by George, second by Paul. Let's see, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Chuck?
Hi.
Okay. Moving on. Agenda item number two, consider of public safety items. The first one is a consideration of fire department grants by Zach Ward, our Fire Chief. Zach, would you like to make any comment on this?
Absolutely. So I can quickly brush on all three at once. So basically, we've been lucky enough to get these basically every year. The safe grants are for our public education efforts in the schools and through our senior population. And the EMPG grant is an emergency management planning grant, and this year we're going to use that to replace some of our traffic barricades that the Fire Department owns and puts out during storms and other events. So we're very happy to get all three, and we'll keep trying to get more.
Absolutely. That's great, Zach. That's really great. Thank you for that. Thank for that continued effort. Nice letter here from the Governor on that effect as well.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the number two is consideration of police department appointments. Lieutenant Bento. Lieutenant, would you like to make any statements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is.
Just wait, just one sec. I'm sorry, just to interrupt Lieutenant Bento. Eric, I think we need to vote to accept those grants.
Oh, do we have to vote to accept them? All right.
So I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to accept the grants for the Sherburne Fire Department as described in our packet.
Done good.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Chuck?
Hi.
Okay, total of $1,720, just so public knows.
Sorry, Lieutenant Bento. I just wanted to make sure we got that done.
No problem at all. We definitely want to not lose any money. It's, these are reappointments. This is sort of the familiarity to have the Board do the reappointments. The collective bargaining agreement was signed a couple months back, and it will be effective until June of 2022. So just asking that the current list of sworn officers that are in the collective bargaining agreement be reappointed.
Okay, we see a list here in our background material. Does anyone on the Board have any questions? Yeah, Paul?
I'm just going to move to reappoint. They're all reappointments.
Yeah, they are.
Yes.
Doesn't sound like there's any other questions. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Chuck?
Hi.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant, and that was, I'm glad we got that contract executed and that the reappointments.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, next agenda item number three, it's an update from the COVID-19 team. Jeff, are you the point on that or who is the?
Well, I'll let Zach go first. Ellen, I mean, Daryl's, like I said, going to dial in, but she's not dialed in yet, so I have some talking points, but let Zach go first.
All right, Chief? He was on.
My apologies, Zach. We have a drill going on, and then we just got dispatched for a possible drill incident, but luckily that's nothing. So I jumped in my truck and was ready to go.
I turned mine off.
Yeah, another busy night, you know? So, just a couple quick things, you know, we're still working on a lot of things. Very active group. I'm just pulling over here and getting back into the slot. I apologize. You know, Daryl certainly had a lot more to speak about from a Board of Health perspective today. But we're still just trying to really assist with the reopening of the town. I think you've been, you've been told that Sharon was able to get us our first reimbursement from the CARES Act. And basically, you know, our next, the next phases that we're going into were, are basically preparing for the potential next wave as we all keep hearing about. So we're kind of, you know, in a, in a, in a demobilization stage as far as everything that's going on and coming down from it, but we're also trying to get ready for what could potentially come next, and we're doing that through, you know, obtaining additional supplies and equipment, cleaning supplies, PPE for our first responders and employees. And, and we're really just going from there. But again, Daryl had a lot more to say, unfortunately. I think she's running a little late. Jeff, I don't know if you had anything?
She just dialed in, Zach.
Oh, great.
I see her name popping up.
And I, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry that I was running away for that, but it sounded serious, so luckily it's not.
The job is a lot more important.
Good work with training tonight. He's got a training class he's giving tonight, too.
Yeah, that's going on now. We just had that call. It's been another busy day in Sherburne, so.
So Daryl, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we're right at your agenda item for a COVID-19 update, and I heard a couple people you might have something to say.
Yes, so let's see if I can remember. I just pulled over so I could call. I guess probably the main thing is that we had spoken when we were at the, with the whole group who was at the DPW to assess the space and make plans for town meeting. And at that time, I talked about everyone wearing masks. I think it's really important for particularly town officials to be wearing them as much as possible and required, and I'll get to that in a minute. Because, one, we need to set the example. Second thing, and we're going to be expecting people to do it, again, I'll get to that in a moment. But what's quite important to me is that it looks like students returning to the schools in Dover and Sherburne will be required to wear masks all day long, and it's time for us to set a good example and just make this the norm. We might be living like this for a year. Let's get used to it and do it and try to change the tide of this thing. So then the other part of that is, after that meeting, questions came up from town clerk and maybe because of information from the Election Commission about whether it would be some violation of voters' rights to require mask wearing. So I did write quite a detailed email to the Department of Public Health because Boards of Health, local Boards of Health, were getting different direction. I wrote to them. I laid out the issues. They wrote back that absolutely it's not in conflict and that it is up to the Board of Health to determine what the safe measures are for town meeting regarding, around COVID-19. So at our Board of Health meeting last night, just to confirm that that's where the Board stood on it, we took another vote and voted to make mask-wearing mandatory to the town meeting. You should know that if someone has a medical condition and just tells us that, then they do not need to wear a mask. Fortunately, there are very few medical conditions that would prevent that. And Zach has offered that in the Fire Department supply are sufficient number of surgical masks that if anyone arrives at town meeting and has forgotten to bring their masks, that they will be given one. So nothing should impede the voting. We've certainly heard far more comments from people concerned about attending town meeting if everyone wasn't wearing masks. Again, this is, although the DPW is a great spot, will have shade. The doors on either side are wonderful for ventilation, but technically it's still considered an enclosed space by the state. And all the science that we hear from the state and other very reliable sources are that the dynamic in indoor spaces is very difficult, so even if we were six or 10 feet apart, that is insufficient, and hence the masks are really important. So there's also on the horizon, in fact, it's, they're having a public hearing on it tomorrow. They wrote it up maybe yesterday, and public hearing is tomorrow. A new regulation mandating the wearing of masks in the state of Massachusetts, so keep your eyes out for that. And I think that's the key, that, to me, that is the key issue. Again, we can reassess as we get closer to the date, but for now, that's the the order being issued by the Board of Health.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? I'm happy to hear.
I was going to add a couple of things, if that's all right, Eric. One is, you know, they're working closely with David on looking at configurations and any accommodations that need to be made for town hall, and I'll let David talk to that. And they're working, as obviously you can expect, very, very closely with the school board, regional school committee, and Superintendent Keough. Matt Natale from the Board of Health has been our principal representative there, as has Kate Peterson from the Dover Board of Health, and so, you know, they're looking at all the measures that they need to consider for, for how, whatever the plan is for the schools. So they're working feverishly on that, have a lot of sub-teams working on that. And one of the biggest concerns we've had of late is the testing delays that you probably read in the papers, now taking, you know, sometimes six, seven days to get the testing results back, which if you're trying to do contract tracing, that's not the most useful delay. So we're hoping that we can get better turnaround time in testing. It's kind of odd, the, I learned this Wednesday, the Quest built a brand-new testing lab in Marlboro, and they're now shipping all their Arizona samples, unfortunately, to Marlboro. So that's part of the reason why Quest has seemed overloaded in the state because they're handling samples from all over. So that's all I had on an update. I did see that Jackie wanted to contribute also.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that I am expecting people to wear masks, and at town meeting, I am planning on putting anyone that comes without a mask in a separate area outside of the building. So I have masks, I have gloves from Zach, and we will offer them to people if they show up without masks, but I never expected everyone to come to town meeting not wearing a mask. I was going to separate all of the non-mask-wearing people outside the building. So I just, I'm really sorry, but I just need to make that clear because at the annual town election, we were told that if, that we could not prevent someone from voting if they were wearing, if they were not wearing a mask. So I set up a separate area for those people, and not one person that came in to vote at the June 23rd meeting was unmasked. Everybody that came in to vote was wearing a mask. And I will have sneeze guards. I'll have, you know, I had sneeze guards and to protect the election workers from the residents, I will be bringing those to the annual town meeting. We're going to set up the checkup tables in a different room than where everybody's going to be seating. I might even put the tables for people to get checked in outside. A lot of it depends on, on the weather. If it's, you know, if it's pouring out, then we'll do a separate room, but if it's really nice, maybe we'll put, I'll put people outside to check people in. So I just, I just wanted to confirm that.
I think Daryl had a comment on that.
Yes, how'd you know that? So I didn't even raise my hand.
I thought.
So your ESP is working well. We would like people who are arriving, who do not declare that they have a medical reason for not wearing a mask, even if they're sitting outside, we'd like them to wear a mask, particularly if they're going to be grouped together with people who have medical conditions that prohibit them from wearing a mask. They may be the more vulnerable population, so merely being outdoors is not going to be sufficient, and there's going to be a bunch of people there, we presume, so.
But I was going to separate them out, so.
What Daryl was saying, separate all people without masks, and you have people who simply refuse without a medical condition versus with the medical condition. It can be a worse situation because those with a medical condition could be particularly vulnerable. Is that right, Daryl?
Yes.
And Daryl's saying that, you know, basically what she's, what she's saying is that's the advice of the COVID-19 team, that refusal to wear a mask is not sufficient to wear a mask. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yes. Well, I mean, I can set up whatever anybody wants. I can do three different locations. I mean, that's.
Except I'm not positive that that, depending on what the layout looks like, that's not what the Board of Health voted on. I don't know that I want to keep trying to dissect it. It's not a big ask for people to put on a surgical mask if that's what we provide them. They're, they're not uncomfortable, all the rest. It's not a big deal. It is a big deal for prevention. It is not a big deal for the wearer if you don't have a medical condition.
So if I could, it's just a matter of law. It's a violation of the federal Voting Rights Law to deny anybody the right to vote on grounds of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask.
We're not denying them the right according to the DPH.
Right. They have to be able to come to the town meeting and to be able to vote, whether or not they're wearing a mask. So I want to be sure that the plans that the town clerk has indicated are traditionally well-accepted and make sense. That's what's done in other towns. I want to be sure that no voter is turned away because they refuse to wear a mask.
Daryl, do you have that opinion from DPH in writing?
Yes.
Do you mind forwarding that at least to David who forwarded?
Okay. I'm curious, if someone showed up and clearly had smallpox, would we let them into town meeting? We're talking about public health on a large scale here, and the mask-wearing is not, it's not a drastic thing, and we're providing masks if people did not bring them. So there's nothing that would prevent them from voting, other than their willingness to put others at risk.
Well, I love your enthusiasm and your emphaticness. I just wanted to caution you, just speaking as a lawyer.
Well, that's why I wrote very carefully to the Department of Public Health.
They are not lawyers.
If there was a conflict.
They are not lawyers.
And they directed me to an MAHB thing written by lawyers, so in any case.
We can debate this. I think it all ends. I would like to see it in review if there's any questions, if it's disambiguous, and we'll ask our counsel, pure and simple. I think, I think right now we're at this point where everyone's just going to kind of clench into a certain opinion. Hopefully it doesn't even happen, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I would echo what Paul said. I'm not sure, smallpox is a perfect analogy, but I don't think the National Department of Public Health gets to decide whether or not somebody, the condition is only somebody can vote. That's really within the purview of the AG, and it's a constitutional question. So I think there is a, I'd like to see the correspondence to and from the Department of Public Health as well. It's like I share Paul's views.
Yeah, we'll see. Daryl provided to us, and if there's anything ambiguous about it, we'll simply get our opinion from counsel on it.
Okay, and I'll just, well, you'll see it in my message to them. Another issue is, by permitting people to come in unmasked, are you driving away other voters who would like to have a safe place to vote? And that, those are the concerns that we are getting from quite a few people.
Like I said, I don't think we're going to resolve it right here and now. Let's take a look at it.
Good point, Eric. Yep, okay.
Okay, was there anything else about a general COVID-19 update hearing from Select Board members?
I was just going to ask Jackie, and she may not want to disclose it, but I'm wondering how we're doing on the RSVPs for ATM.
Um, right now, we have about 110 people, and that included non-residents, you know, like town council, you know, anybody that works for the town that's going to be there. So we're looking at about 110. I was over at DPW today. I met with the sound person, and we discussed all different types of things. We're going to have TVs outside. We're going to set up chairs inside the building, but we will have chairs outside the building also. will have chairs outside the building also, so that, like I said, anyone that's not wearing a mask will be in one section or whatever, but I understand they will have a mask, whatever. But this was my initial thought. And then someone who just is wearing a mask but wants to be outside, so there'd be basically three separate areas. I'm gonna call the tent people and see what size tent and stuff they have, but I'm, we're thinking of getting about 150 chairs, and if we have more than that, then people will have to stand. But there will be enough TVs and stuff outside that if people are outside the building, that they will still be able to see the presentations.
And have you tested the, the remote buttons? You think you'll still be able to use that technology?
Yeah, the remote, so I've spoken to Turner Technologies, and they, they don't, they use some kind of infrared signal or whatever, and it goes 250 feet in diameter. And so that, that will reach a quite large area. So we're probably gonna order, I'm probably gonna order 200, we get like 10% over on the electronic clicker, so if we order two, if we pay for 250, we actually get 275 in case a few of them fail. And my worst fear, and so is Mary's, is that we don't order enough clickers, and then we have to go to paper ballots, which especially with the COVID-19 situation, we don't think would be the best safety situation. So we're probably gonna over-order on the clickers, and according to the vendor, they, they will be able to reach a wide area.
I think that's great. I personally like that technology.
Yeah, and it'll be fast, it'll be, it'll be quick. We'll be able to hopefully get through the town meeting a lot quicker.
That's right. We'll want a faster for wearing masks, but I won't go down there.
Chuck's got an input, too.
Oh, sorry. Chuck, did you have something to say there?
Yeah, I, I've got a question for Jackie, and that's consistent with what Daryl's saying about people that are just concerned about even going. Do we have the ability to allow people to participate remotely? Not everyone has access to the internet, but.
Well, what's gonna happen is the video is going to be livestreamed, so people will be able to watch.
But not vote.
But they can, yeah, the election, well, the laws, the COVID-19 laws that have been passed do not allow for remote voting for town meeting, just representative town meeting. Those are the only ones that can do remote, regular town meetings like we have, you cannot do remote voting. But people will be able to watch if they want to. And then, of course, the cable people, DS Cable, will be putting up, putting it up on, on the YouTube channel and stuff, so people can see it if they want to afterwards.
And we may wanna communicate that to voters that are concerned about, that are interested in it, but are comfortable coming.
Yeah, I mean, I put postings, I put a newspaper posting that hit the DS papers today, it's gonna be next week. I will be putting in another posting. I've posted a ton of stuff on Nextdoor and on the website. I'll be doing more postings about mask requirements and just everything. I'll be posting a lot in the newspapers and on the town website and Nextdoor.
Really, thanks.
All right. Are we ready to move on to agenda item number three?
I think was Paul trying to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, there was a reference there that everybody could hear the presentations. I'm hope, there's no law that requires that presentations have to be made in person. They can be made remotely. So I'm suggesting that all the presentations be made separately before town meeting. And as part of a discussion we had at an earlier session of the board, the suggestion was made that the advisory committee hearing of July 18 was, could fulfill that role. And if we are going to have that fulfill that role, then we should be broadcasting that advisory committee hearing regularly on cable TV. The problem with that is that was a very long day for everybody, and it would be very hard to ask voters to sit through, what was it, eight hours of, of debate and discussion on, on the various articles. So it might make sense for the town or some, some subgroup of town officials to do some editing and put together a one-hour, hour-and-a-half presentation of the presentations that were made at advisory and run that continuously, so that at the actual voting session, we don't have to hear the same presentations and have the same slides, listen to the same discussions that we already had at advisory and elsewhere.
Yeah, so Mary, Mary is on, she might wanna speak to that, but I think that she had planned on trying to do something like a week before, but I'll let Mary speak to that if she wants to.
Yes. Once the advisory report is in the hands of the voters, I'm planning to have a Zoom where proponents of the articles can speak, and people can call in and ask them questions and so forth. And hopefully that will, you know, take care of any uncertainties that people have about it. At that point, the proponents may or may not want to speak at town meeting itself. If they want to speak, I am happy to have them speak. I don't wanna take away anyone's opportunity. And for those people who did not, who choose not to or cannot log into the Zoom that I'm planning, then they have a right to hear these things also. And so I don't wanna curb anybody's opportunities to hear anything. But hopefully, people will get their questions answered, and then they'll be able to, you know, maybe proponents won't wanna make a presentation, or if people have their questions already answered, there'll be very little discussion, people will already know how they're going to vote.
So, sorry, it's Jackie. I can't get my video to work, so I'm really sorry. But while we're on the discussion of town meeting and the setup, I need to know from advisory and the select board if you guys all want to sit up front like in normal town meeting. Dover had, just like the chair and the vice chair of advisory speaking, everyone else, I think, was in the, on the turf field. And I do not think that they had all the select board either. So I just, I just, I would like to get some kind of read from you guys, and maybe you can get back to me later. But I just need to know what your thoughts are about the setup in front.
Well, is there a reason, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there a reason, logistically, why I wouldn't do it? Like, for example, if the, if you can space appropriately, if the select board and advisory sits up front, does that take up other space? You know what I'm trying to say? Or is it?
The problem is, when we went through who needs to be up there, it's me, town council, I believe it's nine advisory members, and then Mary, and then five select board, it was like 18 people and spread out six feet apart. That's, that's gonna be difficult, that, I don't think that's gonna work in the very front, 18 people. And, you know, so we were just trying to figure out, if you guys wanna do that, then I would probably do two rows. If everybody wants to sit up front, I'd probably have to do two rows in order, in order to social distance safely.
Well, in our next agenda item, we're actually gonna talk about who speaks to what. Usually, the select board distributes, you know, certain items that we sponsor, and, and, you know, almost every person takes, has one assigned to them, in that sense. You know, if it's feasible, at least my thought is, and I'd like to hear from the other select board members, is that there is, that we do sit up front in some fashion, as we often present or at least speak to some, to some article. Does any other select board member have any thoughts on this? Paul?
I'm perfectly willing to give up my seat up front and, and sit in the audience to accommodate the chair and the vice chair. And if I wanna speak on something, I'll, I'd raise my hand. So just figuring out, 16 people times six feet is 96 linear feet. That's, that's a lot of space consumed with, with people up front. So I'm, I'm willing to give up my space there and sit in the audience so that the chair and the vice chair can sit up front comfortably.
George, your thought?
I think it's more important that the people from advisory who are making the motions are up there than the select board, because we're, we're, it's more important, we can make our comments from the audience. I think what's more important is, is talk, Steve Seifi has a hand up, getting the people who are making the motions to be up there.
With a quorum of 20, we'll just be talking to two people, anyway. Yeah, yeah.
I know Mary and I had had a discussion earlier about possibly, instead of spreading the motions out amongst all of the advisory members, to essentially just have me read all of the motions. I was, I assume that Jane, as the vice chair, would probably be the seconder. So as long as Mary still feels like that is okay, we could theoretically just have me and Jane up front.
Yeah, that seemed to be what Dover did.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that. And also, remember, typically, when we're on the stage, advisory is sharing mics. So there, you know, everyone on advisory doesn't get their own mic when we've, you know, over at Mudge there. So, you know, you don't want people, they, that can't happen, because they, they're not gonna be sitting close together. You don't want people getting up and down to, to read these things and, you know, so, and even for the selectmen, I don't think you all had an individual mic in the past. So you'd either have to each have an individual mic or, you know.
Yeah, so we, so if it's like two or three people up front, they will each have their own mic for, for the public. I need to talk to Zach about this, but the plan is, most other towns evidently from the sound guy said that whenever anyone spoke, the mic was wiped down by an EMT or someone from the fire department with a, with a Clorox wipe. So, I mean, there are a lot of, you know, very small logistics that need to be worked out, but that's why I do need to know who, who's gonna be up front and who's gonna be speaking, so I can tell the sound guy how many mics I definitely need for tables up front. I don't have to know tonight, but I'm, you know, I'd like to let him know within the next week or so.
Jeff.
One other sort of factual thing to consider in this is, we're actually not spacing people out, we're spacing groups out of households. So if you and your spouse are coming, if you're on the select board and your spouse is also coming, you can sit together in a, a block that's, obviously, you know, you can be exposed to each other. So if, if we have, say, 110 people, as he mentioned, right now, that may be, you know, a select board member and their spouse, or an advisory person and their spouse. So we may wanna have them, so that we don't take up those blocks, have them sit with their spouse, regardless of where you decide you want them to sit, because that will take the number and mean it's less blocks.
Right. But I, for me, I would, I would wanna set the, all the people that are involved at town meeting, the select board advisory, even if they're not up at the very front in terms of speaking with a mic, I would still want them up, way up front, so it's easier for them to make comments. That's what I would be planning to do.
I think, I think at one point, I think Sean had his hand raised, I don't know if he still does.
All right. Can't see him there. I got him watching three different things, the virtual hand, the physical hands.
Paul's got the physical.
I see it's Paul's physical hand. Go ahead, Paul.
So I've been, I've been to a number of town meetings now, and I wanted to suggest to the town clerk the use of overhead mics rather than floor-based mics or table-based mics. They're called boom mics, I believe, or there's another, another word for them. But the point is that aerosols and, and emissions go down, not necessarily up. So if the, if the microphones, because we're gonna be using the inside of a building, if we could have microphones essentially hanging down overhead, it's a lot safer. While there's risks with everything, it's a lot safer. And the, I have seen people cleaning mics between speakers, and I don't understand how one high school student didn't get deathly ill from what she was doing. It was all very clumsy, and she kept using the same rag many times, kind of like a waitress cleaning the table using the same, the same rag. It just was very disturbing to watch this, this cleaning operation. And it may very well be that an EMT will be more precise and more careful, but why expose an EMT to all of that?
Okay. I will, I will speak to, I will call him and speak to him about the boom mics. He just said that that was a lot, what a lot of the town meeting people were doing, but I am happy to call and ask him about the boom mics. I will do that tomorrow.
And hopefully, would everyone wear a mask, and wear a mask when you speak into the mic, hopefully the, the risk of transmission is severely dropped at that point. Anything else on the COVID team update? All right. So with that, I think we're ready to move on to agenda item number four, or, number three, I apologize, number three. That's a discussion about the 2020 annual town meeting. We have reconsiderate, reconsideration of ballot questions that we approved on April 2nd. This is to support the, I think it's a September 1st annual election. And we also have review of warrant articles to annual town meeting, and I want to say a comment there. Again, your background material, you have the updated ballot questions, largely with the revised capital, capital items on there. I think advisory may wanna, I don't know if advisor has anything to say on this, but is there any, any comments, select board members on this?
Well, I think the point of tonight was to find out what they're gonna, what they wanna pay for with debt. I mean, I don't know what you mean by reviewing the warrant, we signed the warrant long ago. So I feel like the only thing we really needed to do tonight was review the ballot questions and have advisory recommend to us what they think we should be doing for debt exclusions, because that's what we would include on the ballot. That was really where we left it on Saturday. I don't think we need to run through everything again, because I don't wanna be here for eight hours again.
On the warrant, though, it's just, it's a coined up background, basically to discuss about any agenda items a select board member may wanna speak on. So it's just about the warrants and our background material.
Okay, I see. I wanted to make sure we weren't talking about revising the warrant, because that's long gone, I mean, we already signed the warrant.
Nope.
But I say, Eric, I think one of the things we haven't done is to vote whether or not we support the articles. You so far voted to put them on the warrant, but it might be nice to take votes as to what we support, so that you, as chair at town meeting, can say, the board voted, you know, three to two to support this article, the board voted four to one to support this article, the board voted five zero not to support this article. So you can give a report to the town as to what the recommendations are of the Board of Selectmen with regard to the articles that we put on the warrant.
First, I'd like to hear from advisory what they recommend for debt exclusions.
All right, Stephen, do you have the capitalist? Are you ready to speak on the capital items?
Yeah, before we get to that, I actually did have one question about a different warrant article, and it's procedural, hopefully the answer is easy, but Article 6 unpaid bills, during the public hearing, the DPW director indicated that the first item, H.P. Fairfield, is in error, I guess that was already paid. So I didn't know, i- is that the type of thing that can simply be edited in the warrant, or is that even not allowed?
I think you would address it in your report, Steve. You would say, the warrant's done, like the warrant is what it is, and you could, you can just make the correction in your explanation.
Yeah, but in terms of.
You're gonna make a motion to approve the 5,069, 34, less the 275, and you'll say why in your explanation of your report.
Yeah. But the warrant itself will still list that item, right? Yeah.
Because that warrant is signed.
Yeah.
Could I speak to that? Can you come up with that number in your head?
Mary?
Mary, Mary Wolf, I think, wanted to.
Yeah, Mary.
I, I believe that the, the listing, if it is below the name of the sponsoring group or person, I um, I believe that is not technically part of the warrant. And so it could be modified and it could simply just be taken, that line could be taken out of there.
Okay.
I believe that has happened in the past with various capital things where, you know, they were withdrawn for one reason or another or supplemental changed. And as long, I don't have the warrant actually right in front of me right now. But, um, the, if the, um, details of it are below, you know, sponsored by the select board or whatever it is, if the enumeration is below that, I believe it can be just taken out and it's not part of the warrant. Maybe David knows.
It is, Mary, it is below the line. So I've got the warrant open in front of me on the, my other screen.
The thing is that I don't like, um, about doing that is it is signed. And although it's not officially posted and endorsed by the clerk, it has been on the website and it's been widely distributed. And I know it's only one little line, but you will have two copies out there of the, the same thing. And one is not going to look like somebody else's and it, it could cause them confusion. I don't, I don't know. But we can, we can adjust it and then repost it on the web. But just realize the one you signed originally is, is out there.
That's up to the select board to decide as far as I'm concerned. I, you know, I, I just know that that had happened occasionally in the past and.
I would check with town council when you guys do your motions meeting.
Uh, well, I guess the problem is the advisory report where I'm sending that out, um, you know, on, on Monday. So, and, and it actually does on, um, the capital items also. Because at last night's capital budget committee, um, Sean decided to withdraw, uh, C1 and C2, the DPW, uh, roadwork related and non-roadwork related, uh, equipment. So, so, so he is withdrawing those requests, which means that essentially capital budget voted no action. And this has ramifications because in the, uh, public hearing for advisory, we approved those items contingent on capital budget approving them, but since they were not approved, um, I don't, I don't know if that's enough to nullify our vote, um, whether we need to do a revote right now to say, okay, now we are officially voting no action on these items.
Yeah, it certainly affects that town meetings. I think it's questions five and six. Are those two items on the ballot as presented before us in our background materials? So certainly on, on the first item there, if we vote in the, uh, the town election, we'd have to at least vote those two items out. And as far as the warrant, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're the same as the, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are below the, uh, the, the proponent.
I would, I would check with town council right away and see what his recommendation is because, I mean, it's confusing. It's going to be confusing either way. David, whether you take it out now or whether you take it out and their report says, well, we, these are actually removed. One way or the other, somebody's going to be confused by it.
I already am.
So I would, I would confirm it with town council.
And if you did want to take a vote, I think that you have to vote to revote.
I would like to take a vote on the capital items as presented in the, in the town, in the town election. I think that is.
Well, wait a second, Eric. We still haven't heard a recommendation from.
I know, but I'm saying, I would like to not defer that tonight is what I'm trying to say.
Oh, no, 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 I wouldn't defer.
Have a smart vote on that. Cause I think there's some deadlines that are written into air. I, I want that.
And I agree with Paul, we should vote on all the warrant articles.
Yep, yep. So I guess I, I give it to Stephen. Do, uh, Steve, do you have, um, any comments at least on the capital items? Any discussion on your recommendation of the capital items and as much as effects our ballot?
Um, yeah, I mean, it, it actually sort of makes it easier that the non-roadwork, uh, related, uh, item is withdrawn because that's probably, that's the one that was most likely, I think we're going to recommend, um, free cash on that one. Um, I had gotten input from, uh, Heidi Doyle, uh, earlier this week. Um, and I see she's on the call. So, so I'd like to, to, to just confirm with her. But I believe that, um, just about everything else that's on the list, um, she was recommending for, um, excluded debt for, um, and I think I welcome any discussion from advisory, um, if anybody, uh, has any opinions to the contrary. Uh, my main, my one question would be item F, which is the Pine Hill Access Road Engineering Study, which, um, I believe, uh, Paul maybe had, uh, previously indicated that that probably would be more appropriately, um, done with free cash since it isn't a, you know, a, a tangible capital improvement. But I think, um, Heidi's recommendations indicated that, um, uh, that, that would actually qualify as a, a capital item. I'm sorry, something for, for, uh, for borrowing.
Stephen, what about item G, the, uh, Pine Hill School improvements? It's only sixteen thousand. I'm guessing that it is capital, capital. So despite the relatively small amount, we're still planning to, uh, to not figure that out of free cash.
Um, that was, that was my plan. We, as advisory, we haven't officially discussed it. I mean, that was the purpose of our convening in your meeting together is to be just like, well, let's just all discuss it at the same time. So it would be my recommendation, I think, to also, um, uh, to so include that in, uh, the borrowing. Um, but, uh, you know, our free cash situation is not dire. Um, it has been much worse in the past. Right now we're at about 1.7 million. And I think about, um, half a million of that is going back out again in this, uh, in this, uh, warrant. Uh, but that still leaves that at, us at 1.2 million, which is really not that bad. But, you know, knowing that, um, our free cash situation does fluctuate. Um, it, it seems like with relatively low interest rates and with the recommendation of the treasurer, it seems reasonable.
Uh, can I make a comment, Eric?
Yeah, please.
I would just, um, I would like to add that kind of what Stephen said from a select board point of view, I agree with him. I think the more free cash we can keep with all the unknowns over the next year is probably a more secure position for the town. And with low interest rates, I mean, even though the Pine Hill School improvements are only sixteen thousand, they are a long-term HVAC investment, even though it's not that expensive. I think in anything over 10,000, that's a, is bondable. So I don't see why, why not. Um, maybe the engineering study is the one, the only one that I think probably doesn't make sense. But if Heidi's finding them bondable and we can go into a very unknown year with extra free cash, I don't think that's a bad thing.
Good point. Paul, you're next.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the number of ballot questions. If we go to the voters with all of these ballot questions, we risk losing all of the ballot questions. Remember that people are hard hit. There are people without jobs. There are people whose employers are cutting pay or, or furloughing people. And the economy is uncertain. And there's this risk of getting COVID and being sick and all that kind of stuff. And to go to the voters with a whole shopping list of items. I, I don't think it's the right thing to do and I think it risks losing all of them. So for the point of view of treating the voters better, I wouldn't include a $16,000 item. Because at the end of the day, we don't really, the 16,000 isn't essential that we have that as a borrowing. In fact, if we borrowed that all by itself, the cost of the borrowing would probably exceed the $16,000 to begin with. So it has to be lumped in with other things. It's too, it's too trivial an amount. So I would, I would urge the board to simplify and to reduce the, the, uh, questions to those that we really can say to the voters, we think it's essential that you vote these because it's essential for the well-being of the town.
Okay.
And I don't think I can say that about a $16,000.
I think it is an extent, it is an essential item, 16,000. It's a dollar amount that you're talking about, Paul. You can't say our HVAC at our elementary school has been an essential item. Um, but I think the point is if you try to, the other thing that, if you tried to group them to get less questions, then you're really putting at risk losing everything, Paul. So.
Well, I'm not suggesting grouping.
But I also think, I mean, you've got to think about the, the free cash. Do you really want to put us in a low, lower free cash position going into a year when we're concerned of all the things that you mentioned?
Well, I don't think $16,000 is going to kill.
You're talking about one light on them. You said you wanted to cut a bunch of them. So I.
Well, also I think the 80,000, yes, you can, you can bond design work for a capital project. That assumes that you're actually going to do the capital project and you're going to go forward with it and so on. It may very well be that by the time the design work is done, we don't go forward with it or we don't go forward with it in a reasonable time period. It's just a lot cleaner to have that done, gives us more options to have that done as free cash rather than as, uh, uh, a borrowing. So I would suggest on those two items, this like a hundred thousand that we would, we could take out, leaving the 1.2 being 1.1 of free cash. I don't think the difference between 1.2 of free cash and 1.1 of free cash is going to make or break the town.
I think Jeff had a.
I would suggest that we, we parse what we're talking about here. Let the select board decide what they want to do with the warrant and let the advisory decide how to fund it. I think we're commingling a lot of things of whether 16,000 is material or not and what it would do to the voters. And that's one of 27 or so articles. So since this is a select board meeting, why don't you guys decide what you want to do with the warrant and then pass it off to us to decide how to fund it?
Peter, we have to vote on what goes on a ballot question. And if you're going to fund it with debt, we have to vote tonight whether that goes on a ballot question or not. So that's why we have to be involved in that discussion.
And I'm, uh, we're all involved here. So why don't you decide what you want to lump together, what's important, what you want to make favorable to the voters? And then we'll parse apart the financing. Cause we can pick each one apart for another eight hours.
Here's this, here's what we're going to do. This is a co-meeting actually where our, uh, advisory is coming to give us a recommendation on the bonding thing. You've heard our input. You've heard input. You've heard, um, opposing opinions from George and Paul. Unless Jeff, you have anything, I'd like to hand it back to Stephen, uh, Steve. Give us, give us a recommendation of what, or give us advisors official stance of what you would like to do on these capital items. And then we'll vote on what goes on the annual town meeting.
On the annual town meeting.
Annual election.
Ballot.
Just give us, uh, vives official opinion of what you, uh, what you recommend on, on these items and we'll take it from there.
Yes, I don't have anything to add, uh, on that. I would just say that Pine Hill Access Road, I think the advantage of showing it on the warrant is there's a whole lot of people concerned about Pine Hill because of the change of hours and everything else. We want to show, I think it's ignoring the expense. We want to show that we're addressing the issue related to the traffic situation in Pine Hill.
Okay. Okay, Steve, do you want to, um, just finish your discussion and take a vote on the capital items? And then we'll, uh, take it from there on the, um, on the ballot.
Sure. Um, so then I guess right now, what, as it's, as it stands, um, we're talking about essentially, uh, bonding everything that's on the capital list, um, everything that's left. Um, so I guess I'll open it up for any comments from any advisory members right now. If, if you feel that, um, that, that we should pay for any of them out of free cash.
Most efficient financing is municipal debt. And if we exclude it, we keep a margin on the taxable amount as we've done for the last fifty years or so. Um, and so I agree that it should be exempt bonded funds for those big ticket items.
I agree as well, Steve. I, I would support the treasurer's recommendation that we bond all of this, given the extraordinarily low interest rates right now especially.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I have a question. I think, just to, just for clarity, um, is there a, is there a requirement that each of the capital items be put in front of the voters individually? Um, or can they be aggregated on, on the town ballot?
That can be aggregated.
Okay, so in that case, this is pretty diminished amount. I support whatever the group wants to do.
Steve, could I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead, Heidi.
Uh, in light of what Paul's saying, the concern I have is if there's any chance that Pine Hill Access Road is not going to be built. You know, the, I understand that you can, um, bond engineering studies for probably five years. But if that's the case, then maybe that $80,000, we've got the free cash to pay for it. Maybe that if that's a questionable issue, it'd be better off not to have that question and pay free cash on that item.
I guess I'll, I'm going to send that one back to the select board. Uh, I mean, I, I have no idea as to whether you, if there is, if there is a feeling one way or the other as to the likelihood of that project occurring.
Well, I would hope that the project.
I like to say, okay, this is my day job. We've bonded designs that haven't been constructed all the time. Technically, the lifespan of a design is actually well more than five, 10 years. So, um, you are allowed to, to bond designs. Like Paul, I think, said earlier, there's an assumption that you actually construct that project. But nonetheless, I've done it in my day job. Something happens. You can't build something you've designed. You still go forward and you've, you've bonded that design. So I do believe it is bondable unless, uh, George, you have any opinion on that?
No, I, I would actually agree with, I mean, that was one that I, I would be, I would be more up to take the 80,000 off than the 16 because it's for an engineering study. I feel like that's less bondable. And that's something that we're doing a study and then we would bond the road if we decide to build it as a town. So I, I think that's, that's more of an expense that we should be paying out of free cash. Um, and then the others, I would just go with the recommendation of the treasurer.
It's technically not a study. It is actually an engineered design. There is a difference. So I believe that the end result of that is going to be a biddable project versus a study.
Hey, Steve Seize, Steve Leahy here. Can I just get a comment from, what's the total number being proposed, the total number for capital here? I know there are some numbers removed from chunk lane.
So let me see, let me scroll down to my, uh, my new number here. All right, so currently the total amount that is being recommended is, uh,
Thank you.
And the two that were removed, uh, Stephen, were the $30,000 of equipment, DPW non-roadwork and 58,400 of roadwork related. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Basically, I didn't see.
Uh, no, because C3 is the wheeled excavator and that got passed. That's still in.
So C1 and C2, yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, I certainly, I can see the argument about the, uh, engineering study and, uh, um, it, it does make sense to me. Um, but I, I think that I still, still fall on the side of, um, if it is bondable, we should probably do that. And that's, you know, it, obviously that's entirely from the perspective of, uh, advisory. I think that that gives us, uh, maximum financial, um, flexibility. So that would still be my recommendation, although I do feel that it is a logical argument, um, um, that that particular item, um, could be paid with free cash. But from what I've heard so far from the rest of advisory, um, I, I think, uh, nobody else seems to be in support of that. So, um, I think unless I hear any comment to the contrary, I think our recommendation is still, um, for every, uh, currently approved capital item to be, um, excluded that.
Okay, um, do you want to vote on that or?
Um, yeah, I think, uh, I'll, one last, uh, call for any comments from advisory. All right, and then, um, can I get a, uh, motion for, um, a recommendation? For, I guess we can just lump all of the, um, capital items together since we are gonna, well, somebody can make a motion.
I would move that the 1.192 million in capital projects be exempt debt on this year's town meeting, town, all town meeting.
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Jane Madarazo.
Aye.
Waseem Basali.
Aye.
Brendan Daly.
Aye.
Peter Galatano.
Aye.
Drew Koshal.
Yes.
Stephen Leahy.
Nay.
Was that a nay? Was that a nay?
Yes, that's a nay.
Okay. Natalie Weir.
Aye.
I am also an aye. So that is 7-1 in favor of all of the capital items being excluded that.
Okay, thank you. So back to the select board, based on the recent vote on advisory. Is there any comment, how that would affect the ballot questions as proposed to us in the background material? It effectively eliminates question number five right now. There's been other discussion about combining. Is there any further discussion on our proposed ballot questions? Their motion on our proposed ballot questions?
Move to approve the ballot questions based on advisory recommendation excluding question five to be included on the ballot.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. I'll go in order I see him. Jeff, how do you vote?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul, how do you vote?
I'm going to follow the recommendations of advisory and vote aye.
Okay, and Chuck, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that's proposed there. Thank you, Nat. Our next agenda item is on the warrant itself. And as Paul identified, he's correct, we have not actually taken votes on, on the individual warrant articles as a stand, to make opinions on those.
Can we do this as a consent agenda, Eric?
I second that.
Here's, here's all I'd like to do. It might take a little bit of time, but it's not gonna be too bad. I'm just gonna read off the wa, I'm just gonna read each one off. And someone yell "hold" if you don't think you're gonna vote for it or anything else like that, kind of like we've done before. Then we'll do a consent, we'll go on and vote all those unanimously, you might, you might talk about one or two. Makes sense? All right. I just gotta make sure the ones that say, is there anything here not by the select board? I'll figure out when I get there, probably planning article.
Well, we want to vote on our support or not support on every article anyway.
Yep, you're right. Okay, Article 1, okay, I'm just gonna start reading them off. Article 1 reports. Article 2 FY20 Subdivision Appropriations. Article 3 OPEC Trust Fund. Article 4 Unclaimed Property. Article 5 Cemeteries. Article 6 Unpaid Bills. Article 7 Revolving Funds. Article 8 Stabilization Funds. Article 9 FY21 Omniscience Budget.
Hold.
Okay. Article 10 Capital Improvement Plan. Article 11 Use of Free Cash. Article 12 Applied Prudent Investor Standard for Library Trusts. Article 13 Tax Taken/Deed in Lieu of Foreclosure. Article 14 Accept MGL 59, Section 57A Repayment of Tax Bills. Article 15 DPW Fire Police Surplus Equipment Revolving Funds. Article 16 Community Choice Aggregation. Article 17 Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. A lot of pages on that one. Article 18 To Remove Section 4.9 of the Zoning Bylaws Temporary Moratorium on Marijuana. Article 19 Amend Section 1.4.6 of the Zoning Bylaw Findings. Article 20 Amend Zoning Bylaw Section 4.5 Open Space Subdivision Bylaw.
Hold.
Okay, I thought so. Article 21 Amend Zoning Bylaw Section 4.9 Inclusionary Zoning Provisions. Article 22 Coolidge Crossing. I'm gonna put a hold on that one. I'm staying. Article 23 Citizen Petition Pine Hill Elementary Start Times.
Hold.
Okay. So you have four holds. Excuse me. So do you want, let's take the vote right now, on everything that's not held. Do I have a motion and a second for any, all the other remaining articles which we did not hold?
So, some of them.
Okay. Okay, so I got, I think I had Chuck for the motion, Paul for the second. What's the all in favor to support these articles? Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Okay, very good. The first hold was Article 9 FY21 Omniscience Budget for next fiscal year. I believe Chuck, you, you did a hold on that? Do you want to open discuss?
Waste a lot of time. We spent two and a half hours discussing this last Saturday. I just want to make sure that I have the ability to, to vote aye or nay on it. The staffing request from the town clerk, treasurer, and tax collector, I disagree with the proposal on the budget, but I don't want to rehash it. That was discussed at length on Saturday, but I, that's, that's the reason I put it on hold.
I mean, can we? If we voted on this before advisory, we would have voted on the budget as proposed to advisory before they changed it. I guess our, our vote now would have to be as advisory recommended it based on last Saturday. Is that correct? Anyone?
I think that's right.
Yes. Some moved. I'd make that motion.
So you're, you're moving to approve the budget as supported by advisory?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
All right. All right, let's start the votes. Jeff?
Well, I, I don't think we have further discussion. I, I'm in agreement with Chuck. I, I thought we should have with the original request from each of those departments, not what they ended up. So I don't know how to vote on that, if we can. I agree with the rest of the budget other than those items.
Yeah, I'm on the same page, I believe, with you and Chuck as well on this one here, but I don't want to vote down the omniscience budget. I don't want to show select board voted down the omniscience budget unless we simply handle it in a report at town meeting itself.
Well, the other way, and Mary's on, other way is we can make a motion at town meeting, you know, separate from that. We can put a hold on that, those budget items, and then, you know, vote down the recommendation and then vote, Paul can tell us the logistics, but.
How about a motion to approve the budget as recommended by advisory, with the sole exception of the staffing request in the original budget for town clerk, tax collector, and treasurer? Does that make sense?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
I'll second it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Yes, and that's something I'd be willing to vote on. Okay, so that's an amendment to that. I don't know how that appears in the report when we do it, but at least that's how we're, that's how whoever reports on it will report on it.
I don't think, I think that's more Eric at town meeting. You'll say the select board voted this way on the budget. It's not in the report, it's not in the advisory report how we vote, it's more at town meeting. You'll say, select board voted unanimously to support this article, or, or you'll report this.
Okay. Okay, so it's a friendly amendment.
You might have to make a different motion then, though, George, right? Wouldn't we have to then vote that separately at town meeting?
Well, we're not voting on it. I mean, we're voting like every other citizen at town meeting.
Yes, I know, but the town would have to, what's published is.
Yeah, somebody would have to make a motion from the floor that they want to revise, they'll put a hold on those budget items, and then they can make a motion from the floor if they want to make a change to the budget.
Yeah, that's.
They would have to, they would have to offer an amendment.
And would we have to vote down that section of the budget before we vote for the amendment?
You would, someone would offer the amendment, the vote would be on the amendment, and then depending on what happened with the amendment, then the original motion.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Mary.
Someone explain to me what we're voting on then, so.
We're voting on supporting the omnibus budget with the exception of town clerk, town collector, and treasurer.
Treasurer, that's correct. All right. And we have, I believe, a motion from Paul still, is it still a second from George or the second from Jeff?
Doesn't matter. I'll take the amended second, too.
Okay. The all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. At some point, David and Diane, I'll come to you and tell me what to say. All right, so I think the next hold that I have.
Before you leave that, I, I do think it's important that, Eric, you do be the, the one sitting up front and giving the report as to the selectman's position on the different articles. It makes sense to do that rather than having all of us try and share the same microphone and all that kind of stuff. Just don't think it's safe. So for this town meeting, without creating precedent or whatever, I would urge the board and, and you to take on that responsibility and report to the voters what we just voted, across the board, all the articles, and what we're about to vote for the rest of the articles.
Okay, because I know after this, once we go through these, the votes, our individual votes on this, there is the usual one, with certain articles, people who advocate for it will speak to it. I don't know, let's talk about, let's get through these holds and then talk about that there. Because in the past, it's like, you know, I've done stormwatering and I've done something else, you know, whatever that is.
That's a different, that's a different thing, Eric. That's like, if we're the proponent of an article, one of us would get up to speak about it at a presentation. But hopefully, as Paul recommended earlier, we're not going to be doing a ton of presentations at town meetings, so.
Okay. I still, I'll clarify that after I go through these holds, but I know what you're saying. Okay, next hold's Article 20. Amend Zoning Bylaw Section 4.5 Open Space Subdivision Bylaw. This is the, this had quite a bit of discussion. This was the open space where, and I think we got an email from, from John Higley. I'd like to discuss it among the board here, but I also take some comments from the planning board as well on this. Any, before I go to the, anyone else? George, any comment?
The reason I put a hold on this is because I, I love the idea of the open space bylaw. I just, the one caveat is I really don't like the idea that they're taking away the byright subdivision by doing that. I think, as I said on Saturday, I think having both options, like they do, as somebody on the planning board said, as they do in Holliston, makes our town a friendlier town to deal with, makes, gives developers more options, and as long as it still fits, you know, within our bylaws, then I think we should allow both options.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, I disagree with George. I, I don't think we disagree really on content, but you know, I, I, I follow the guidelines of the planning board on this, which is that we're not preventing someone from doing a traditional development. We're just saying that they have to prove that an open space one is, is not as cost effective for them or for the town in order to be able to do a conventional one. So it's not prohibited. Their point is that if you make the choice of either one, and I can understand the logic for that, what's, the developers have always done will be easiest for them to propose, so they won't even propose an open space one. They'll just do what they know, and so I don't think it will have the desired effect of preserving the open space in town. So I, I don't agree with that recommendation that George made.
And I'll say a counterpoint, because I do think, and I know it's not cluster, and that's a bad word, but that style development is becoming more and more common, so I'm not sure if the, what the developer knows or not. Developers, especially in larger parcels, are savvy enough that I think that, you know, they're gonna do what is most cost effective for them. And I don't think the threshold was cost effective. I think it was environmentally impactful, if I remember correctly. And that's subjective, and that's gonna be a point of basic discussion when it comes up to it. So they're gonna, if they have to prove something that's less environmentally impactful, those, those type studies can, can get, can get bogged down. I think if you have an advocate that wants one direction or another, they can push it in that direction. Paul?
So I want to support the planning board. I should disclose I'm a former member of the planning board. They're all volunteers, they've worked hard, they, they have staff, they've focused on this. We, as a select board, have not focused on it in the same degree as they have. I think we should give them every opportunity to present the case to the voters. We should stand with them. Certainly, if member, individual members want to speak against it, that's their right of members to speak against it. But I think the town is better off enacting this bylaw than defeating this bylaw. And I'm very mindful of the fact that it's a two-thirds vote to, to enact it, and it may not pass, and we may have nothing. So I think we should rally around the planning board, and let's see if we can do something. If it doesn't work the way it's intended, we can change it in future years.
Okay, understood. I will say 60% of the select board is all former planning board members. Mary Ann, I think you had your hand up. Mary Ann Neutra. And you're on mute, by the way.
All right, I'll, I'll let the select board speak first. But I can address George Merle's concerns. I wonder, did you get the email today, George, that laid out?
I did, I did. I still, I just, it's more of, I hate taking things away. I feel like we're already in nanny state in a lot of ways, and it's more of a individual view of things that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that.
Subdivision law has worked in the past, and I mean, we haven't really had any subdivisions built with it in a number of years anyway, so hopefully, by adding this subdivision, it's going to make it more desirable for a developer to do something that preserves open space and brings a little more revenue to the town. I just don't think we need to take the other one away in order to do it.
Well, yeah, just to reiterate, developers tend to do, as anyone who's served on planning board knows, they tend to do what they know how to do. And if you take, if you have them both by rights, basically, a developer can end up doing what he prefers to do, or she prefers to do. And I should emphasize that this does not preclude conventional subdivisions. There may be parcels in town where a conventional subdivision would be better. And the planning board has issued plenty of special permits. But it is important that we guide the development of these big properties in Sherburne that may become subdivisions with the current pressure on housing, as we've said. There, there are several properties at play right now that very easily could become subdivisions. So if we have either one by right, basically, we're not guiding development. We're not, we're not following the vision of what we have for a future Sherburne. So it's really, it's really a choice. And it doesn't preclude conventional, it just gives us the ability to guide development in the way that we think is better for the town, for now. But it's true that in the future, if we find it doesn't work and we're not getting what we want, or, you know, it's abused or whatever, we, we change it, absolutely.
I just want to add a comment on that, is that the byright, both at advisory and the select board, has, seems to be a little bit of a contentious issue, making it not, I guess, not easier to, the developer can pick from between one and the other. That, I guess my only advice to the planning board, it, it might make the difference again in two-thirds vote. As I think in, most people in general approve this concept, and that seems to be the largest hangup. So that's just my only advice, where I'd hate to see that kill this, this overall thing. I think it'd be interesting, I read into it a bit more, and I saw the, was it 50% uplands that they had, the conservation land, or whatever you call it, has to be, is that right, Mary? Is it 50% up, uplands?
That's right, that's right. That's to prevent the developer from just calling the wetlands the open space.
No, I've seen that. I've seen, so it's interesting, because I've actually, on the cluster zoning, I think it's in framing, you actually have to draft an actual traditional subdivision and show that it's actually constructible. The way this is written, there, there will be certain circumstances based on the shape and geometry of a wetland and upland that you might get more homes in under the actual, under this rather than a conventional subdivision. So I could see it going either way. I'm still, I'm gonna vote to support it. I personally would like to see it by right, because I, I think the market will drive it, and I think you can see circumstances where someone actually can get an extra home in under this than they wouldn't otherwise. Probably just like one. It's not gonna be huge, but just based on the shape of wetlands. But I still tend to support it, but I would advise that if it doesn't pass, that they come back with something that gives it by right, so I think that would get to two-thirds.
Right, could I just quickly speak to the possibility of more houses in the open space subdivision? Yeah, I mean, a developer may, you know, try to manage the layout such that he gets more in an open space subdivision than he could be in a conventional. But we've written into the bylaw, this was a concern of Jane. We, we, we thought it was, we thought that the bylaw formula was such that that couldn't happen, but I. But I think Jane had a good suggestion to add a phrase saying that you will not have more residential units or houses in an open space subdivision that you could have had in a conventional subdivision. So we plan to amend on the floor of town meeting to add that phrase.
Just what I've seen, my own experience, I don't think it's a killer, because I think you'll basically, you might get one, and that'd be it. And you almost have to show, you have to, and show like a overlay of a conventional subdivision. And whether they go through that effort or not, will be interesting to see. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I think it's going to be tough, it's going to be a tough line to prove, one way or the other. But I'd say I don't think it's a killer one way or the other. It's going to maybe make a difference of one house.
I mean, yeah, I, I agree with you on the numbers, but as far as the byright, having both by right, basically, I think the, the decision is, do we want to, are we serious about wanting open space subdivisions? If we are, then it's better not to give the, give a, such a free choice, because a developer can still do a conventional subdivision. If he can show that it's environmentally better than a open space subdivision could be, and it may be in some cases, but that at least gives us some control.
Yeah, George, go ahead.
Mary Ann, I, I do have to, I do want to respond to one thing you said about developers. I think what developers are going to look for is what makes the most economic sense. And I think this open space subdivision bylaw is going to make more economic sense to developers as well because of the infrastructure costs. And I think it's, I don't think it's right to say developers are just going to do what they know. No, they're going to do what makes the most economic sense for them. And most developers actually do care about, I know a lot of people don't believe it in this town, but developers do care about their environmental impact and, and how they're, you know, stewards to the land. But, so I just think, you know, again, I love, I love the idea of this. I really do. But I also don't like the idea of taking away things that are already by right.
All right. I think we've, uh, Paul, go ahead.
So can I make a motion to approve support this article?
I'd like to second the motion with a comment that if George actually ever served on the planning board, he'd be supporting this as well.
I do support the bylaw. I don't support what it takes away.
Our board, really, honestly, the select board is former planning board, former advisory, so there's your pathway. All right, I'm going to take the vote now. I'm going to take the vote. We have a motion and a second to support. Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
I am aye as well, so it's 4-1-0. Okay, next, uh, I think it was on the very last page, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it was a citizen petition, and I just vote that we don't support this because, as we talked about on Saturday, the person already pulled the article.
Oh, actually, um, no, there was a hold on Article 22.
Oh.
It's my ability to abstain off of it. So I just, I don't want to give unanimous vote to this. I have to abstain off this article. It's the only reason I put a hold on it myself.
I move.
So I move.
Article 22.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to, um, support Article 22. Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chuck?
Chuck, you're on mute.
I think he said, I'm sure he said aye. Okay, I get it. And I am abstaining, so it's a, a 4-0-1. Article 22, uh, 23, I'm sorry, citizen petition, just like you, you did there.
I'll make a motion to, to not support Article 23.
All right, um, Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So that's a base, yeah, motion not to support, or whatever that is, 4-0-1. Or is it, I mean, 5-0-0? Okay, now the only thing I want to touch base on, is there anything that we want to, is there anything where we wanted to give any special reports on, on, on any of these articles here? That we're sponsoring one way or the other. Otherwise, it'll be staff or other boards, anything like that.
If, if we need to give a report on the Coolidge Crossing one, I would. I could do that on, you know, what Mary had suggested, doing the Zoom presentations ahead of time. I can, I'd describe that article, because I know that's one that came from us, so I just, um, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. And that, um, I can touch base with Sean if he wants me to speak to the Stormwater Capital Fund. That'd be something I could speak to, and I'll touch base with Sean on that. Sean on the call?
Yes.
One thing sort of related to this, you know, Mary was talking about having a Zoom call a week in advance. When Mary and I spoke, they, she was thinking of maybe, you know, on the Zoom call, having a five-minute presentation on the planning board items, and maybe a one-minute summary presentation, just to sort of recap at ATM, and for people that didn't dial into the Zoom, just so that it's not taking a lot of time in the annual town meeting, but a bit of a refresher on what the main points are. So that may be an approach that some of the bigger bills could use.
Okay. And also, this is something we only have to decide now. People want to look through the warrant and think about it on, on, on yourself, is something that you particularly want to speak to. We can also decide at the next meeting as well.
Can I ask one question before? I know Stephen Sei said they wanted to adjourn after the warrant discussion. I wanted to ask Mary a question with both the chairs here. I know one, I know a typical tradition in our town meeting is to have the chairs of each board give a speech and all that. I'm hoping, just because I know we want to keep town meeting short this year, would that be something that we're not going to do this year?
That would be up to the, um, the chairs to decide. I'm not going to tell them they can't talk, but, maybe they would like to consider.
Well, could I make a motion that we request the chairs of both boards to exercise restraint and not use up the time of town meeting to make speeches? And to do that instead in a Zoom conference organized by the moderator?
I'm happy to agree to that.
I don't even know if we need a motion, Paul. I just, oh, I see Darren, Eric, I see Darren has his hand up.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Darren, yeah, sorry.
So I was just going to say two things real quick. The, um, I think in a lot of our town meetings that we've seen this year, they really are making efforts to reduce, to, to eliminate any of the sort of non-essential speeches and non-essential, you know, traditions that you would do in a typical year, just to keep it safer and quicker. And then, another thing, and I know I just joined in, is what's been really effective in some other places is they really have almost like a pre-town meeting four days before, five days before by Zoom. And really, the purpose is almost to, to, obviously, you're not going to prohibit somebody from debating an article at a meeting. But almost the purpose of that meeting is to go through the discussion and debate with the hope that you'll sort of take care of that before our town meeting, and it'll keep town meeting shorter. That's something to think about, is, is something you could do a week or so before a town meeting, just a complete pre-town meeting, giving everyone a chance to sort of debate it, the articles, then by Zoom, and thereby hopefully reducing the amount of discussion at town.
We've already talked about doing that, Darren. Are you new on the call?
Yeah, I just joined in. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, oh, we've said in more time. I apologize.
All right. I'm certainly been more than happy not to speak. Is there any discussion on this, or do you want to close up agenda item number four? I don't know if, Steve, if you want to call advisory to close?
Just a little question before we close. Does advisory need to revote the unpaid bill since there's been a change on that since our vote on Saturday?
No, the change, Eric, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please, Sean.
We changed that before the vote Saturday. The number was adjusted for your vote.
Sean's right, Jane. He, he did, that was mentioned on Saturday.
No, it's printed, it's printed wrong on the warrant, but your vote reflects the adjusted.
I guess that does bring up actually another question, is whether, does advisory need to revote C1 and C2 on capital if they're being withdrawn? I mean, I guess it's sort of convenient that Town Council is here, because we, we did have a question as to whether we should actually just amend the warrant and remove those, or leave them in. But I realized that now that advisory is still in session, if we do have to have a revote, we should do it right now, because we're not going to, we're not going to have another meeting before the advisory report is actually due to the printers.
It wouldn't be amending the warrant. It would be changing the description that falls below the proponents. You can't amend the warrant.
Yeah, but I guess what I mean, because right now, the advisory report has, you know, advisory comment and recommendation for each individual capital item.
Right.
So if the description stays how it is, then, you know, officially, we did approve those items contingent on something that didn't happen. So that leaves kind of a question right now as to the status.
Hey, Steve?
Yeah.
If I might, it, I think it's going to, it's going to write up better in your report if you revote it. So it'll reflect that I withdrew them, rather than you voted to support, and then we withdrew.
Yeah.
I think it's a lot simpler to just change that vote, revote those two that, that it was withdrawn.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
Okay. All right, then, can I get a motion on, uh, Article 10, Item C1 of the Capital Improvement Plan, Equipment Non-Road Work Related?
Steve, what's the actual number then?
The, well, so it's Item C1, but because Sean is withdrawing it, essentially, we're, we should be voting no action on it, but it's in the amount of $30,000, the, the request.
Then I move that advisory, take no action on budget item, what's that number?
Uh, C1. Article 10, C1.
Article 10, C1.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Jane Materazzo?
Aye.
Peter Gallatano?
Aye.
Wasim Basali?
Aye.
Druv Kachal?
Uh, yes.
Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Steve Leahy?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so that passes 8-0. Now, can I get a motion on Article 10, Item C2, Equipment Road, DPW Equipment Road Work Related, in the amount of $58,400?
I vote no action.
Second.
Second. All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Jane Materazzo?
Aye.
Peter Gallatano?
Aye.
Brendan Daly?
Aye.
Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Druv Kachal?
Yes.
Wasim Basali?
Aye.
Steve Leahy?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so the motion passes unanimously.
Steve, before you adjourn, I just wanted, before you guys disappear, I had one more comment on the warrant, because somebody had texted me a question about it. When we voted on all the articles, we voted to support the articles that we did not hold, not to agree with advisory. Because I know, in particular, there was one, I think Article 15, advisory voted no, no action, but we voted to support it. I just wanted to make that clear, that the articles that we voted in our consent agenda were, were to support those articles.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, if there's nothing else, then can I get a motion to adjourn the advisory committee?
So moved.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Jane Materazzo?
Aye.
Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Peter Gallatano?
Aye.
Brendan Daly?
Aye.
Druv Kachal?
Yep.
Wasim Basali?
Aye.
Steve Leahy?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. The meeting is adjourned at 8:44 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and on to the select board. That concludes Agenda Item Number Three in 2020 Town Meeting. And on to Agenda Item Number Four, Consideration of Appointments.
Make a motion to appoint Catherine Rokio for a term to expire June 15th, 2023, to the Farm Pond Advisory Committee?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Can't imagine why you shouldn't want to stick around for that. Okay, second item is the consideration of proven election workers. I think we all have the list here.
Both approval. Second.
It's a big list, too.
It is a big list, yes, yes, it is.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chuck?
I'm going to recuse myself, because my lovely wife is on the list, and I think she gets $35 compensation, so I'm going to recuse myself.
I am aye as well, 4-0-1. Okay, what's next? We have administrative items. I'd like to do the deficit spending one first, is Sharon On?
Yep.
Okay, hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, I can.
Okay, great. Okay, um, this is just an adjustment for the August 1/12. When I presented this on the 23rd Select Board, I was under the impression that the 1/12 was based on our omnibus budget, but it's not. It's based on, um, the total amount to be raised for FY 2020. So they asked me if I would increase the request from $2,365,119 to $2,401,332, which equals exactly 1/12 of our total amount to be raised. So it's just a, just a minor adjustment, $36,213.
And you need, you need to also vote to approve that?
Yes, I do.
Paul?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chuck?
Put a thumb up, Chuck.
Do it like this, Chuck. All right. I am aye as well. Um, we had a, um, let's see, oh, we'll do a town, are there any town administrator reports?
No, other than Sharon's birthdays this week.
Happy birthday, Sharon.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
In the old days, we used to, we wouldn't eat cake until everyone blew on it first, you know? I think you'll skip that this year.
Thank you.
Uh, that's a good one. Um, we do have a, um, a select board report from Chuck.
I just want to do, I don't know if we have the ability to put it up on the, uh, the screen. We received a lovely note from Nick Paganella in Framingham. It's addressed to the select board, dated July 15th. It's short, so I'll read it verbatim. "I've been a farm pond park ranger in the early hours during the summer for the past three years, and I found all the employees of your town to be really dedicated." Here is just one admitting, "Making sure all is properly maintained at the lake," signed by Nick. It's a picture of our DPW director, uh, doing some work. I can't tell what it is. But I just, it's a lovely little note. We get enough other types of notes. I just wanted to, that, that was really nice to see. So that's, that's the end of my report.
I'd like to put a.
I just want to ask Sean a question about it.
It's got a little quote.
Is it actually shoveling, or is it posed?
Well, being that it was 95 degrees and I was standing in the back of a pickup truck, I really didn't want to stay there. Oh, thanks for putting that up there. No, I was, we were actually filling a hole that was washed out next to the gate, but, uh, he did make me stand there for an extra five minutes so he could get his camera to work.
You know, Eric, can I just add in, though, this was a nice note, but I want to point out, there was a huge project that went on this weekend. I know Eric and I toured it, that, on Lake Street. They, they installed an enormous culvert, which consisted of four concrete precast, you know, components that were probably in the neighborhood of 5,000 or 6,000 pounds each, that were put in to form a culvert around some wetlands and beaver dams up there. And the prior culverts were, were clogged and had been repaired. Sean can give us the details, but this was a huge deal, besides shoveling some stone, this project. So Sean, do you want to give them the quick, just overview that I've misstated, or correct me?
Well, you got it close. It was, um, we did do a four-by-four bolt box culvert to replace a couple of failed two-foot pipes. I'm sure everyone's noticed that Lake Street's been closed all week. That's what we've been doing. And it's tomorrow morning at about 7:00 AM, we're going to start paving back over the patch, and the road should be open before the weekend. the weekend.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that, that people appreciate that. That's, that's quite improvement on multiple levels. That what was in there, it wasn't like 224-inch pipes, or 218-inch pipes, maybe, that just simply let water flow back and forth between them, let some flow go from, from the other side of Dells to Dells' side. This is a real box culvert, actually, where they are, that's gonna have a natural bedding to it. So if any of you've seen things like a smushed turtle on the roadway, it's because they can't get through those pipe culverts. This is actually gonna be better for the overall ecosystem, the environment, the flows. It's much more structurally sound. This other one failed just at, at the end, because the other one wasn't designed even to be a culvert. It was, it was a piece of concrete pipe that they laid in the ground probably 50 years ago. So I think it's quite an improvement that was done out there, and good job, Sean.
And in terms of complaints that we get, I got one from Sean, wanting to know why none of the select board members showed up to shovel some workloads on this project, so.
But some of us did show up.
Above my pay grade.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I've worked with Russo Brothers before, and that's a good contractor. So I don't know how they selected, but I like, like them to get work in town, because they've done, they do high-quality work. Yeah.
I have one other thing, and I'm sorry to bring this up now, but I forgot about it earlier. When we get the consent agenda, when I looked at my calendar, I realized on August 6, I'm actually gonna be traveling to upstate New York. I'll probably be up there, but the internet service is terrible. So I just wanted to talk to the board and see if there was a, I'm sorry to do this now, it hit me while I was in this meeting. If we had anything scheduled for that day already, this is maybe a question for David, or if there was any way we could switch it to the following week.
The only thing I had asked, I asked the library's oldest project managers to give a report on that date, but to be honest, the person who I wanted to give a report isn't available, so switching that might be advantageous for that as well.
I agree, Eric.
Yeah.
And I know, and I, and I actually, just so you guys know, I spoke to Roy McDowell the other day, and they're hoping, I think the 13th will give them a little more, he said the 6th was gonna be tight to come back to present more to us on Coolidge Crossing, so maybe by giving them an extra week to the 13th, gets them in front of us in August as well.
13th works for me.
I'm fine with either date. I think the 13th might be working better for my requested library update. Paul, do you have, Paul or Jeff, do you have thoughts, one or the other?
I'm actually gonna be out of town, the 6th also, so it's better for me, too. I mean, I, I'll be in Zoom territory, but, but I think it's good.
I certainly want to accommodate George, so, but I know I have an event that week, and I just don't, I didn't write it in my calendar, so. And we have town meeting on that Saturday, two days later. So it's gonna be a packed meeting. Is, is it possible to have the, the meeting on Saturday, just before town meeting? Do we have to have a separate meeting on the 13th?
Well, since we're going into town meeting live, I think that's kind of a bad idea to be in, I, I think we're better off doing a Zoom call earlier in the week to get all those other, the other thing is having it two days before a town meeting. Hopefully, we won't have to do anything. I know usually, day of town meeting, all of a sudden, there's some items that come up. If we have a Zoom meeting two nights before, then hopefully there's nothing that we have to do in person on Saturday morning.
We're starting, what, 9:00 AM on Saturday?
Correct.
I'm amenable to doing it at 7:00, because I think we.
But we have presentations from the library project manager and Roy McDowell. I don't think we can ask them to come on 7 o'clock on a Saturday morning.
You can certainly ask.
What, they want to go to the beach?
No, I, I agree with George. Either the 6th or the 13th, you know, for, to accommodate the, the third-party presentations. I support the 13th. I want to make sure everyone else is free.
It's fine.
Paul, are you free that day, or not?
I, I, I have an event that I didn't write in my calendar, so I have to look it up, and to look it up, I gotta go find my wife, who's got that piece of paper. I'll let you know afterwards, but if I can, I'll try to, try to do that.
And if it has to stay the 6th, I just, I, I'm not sure whether I'll be, I'll probably be able to call in on my phone, but I probably couldn't do Zoom. I'm in the middle of the Adirondacks, so.
You want to?
So I'll make a motion to change the meeting to August 13 from August 6.
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Paul, do you want to, do you want to do what you said you had to do, to find out if you're busy or not? I mean, I, I don't want to, like, change a date to preclude, you know, to allow someone to preclude someone else.
I think she's got to bed.
Okay. Smart.
I'm gonna vote yes on this to accommodate George, and if I, I can't be there, I can't be there.
All right. Well, thank you for that. All right. I'll go around. Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul's already voted yes. Chuck?
Aye.
And I'm I as well. Okay, be on the 13th.
Thank you. Sorry about that, guys.
No problem.
No, it's better.
Okay, if there's no one else, I'm intending a, now, do I do the motion to adjourn?
Just one, sorry, Eric, one thing. I just got a text. Diane, yes, it is at 7:00. Same as usual.
Oh, yes. Yep, 7:00. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn, and then I'll do the executive session language?
So moved. You gotta do the executive session language, session language before we adjourn.
Okay, so I'm basically going to intend a motion to adjourn open session, to enter executive session, for the items clearly called out by the town administrator at the beginning of this meeting, and the chair does declare that warrants executive session.
I have a question before we vote on this. I have no idea about the third executive session. It's like all over the place. It says litigation, it says collective bargaining, it says non-union negotiations, it says union negotiations, it says comply with privacy. I mean, can we narrow that down to something more distinct? Are we talking about litigation?
We got no materials on it ahead of time.
Yeah, there's nothing in the packet, so it's a complete mystery to me.
It's being presented by town council, Darren, if you want to say.
Yeah, Darren.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, we, it's right from the statute, and there's a reason, there's a reason it's written, like, it is, it's not a, uh...